We'll call the board of the meeting of Butler County Board of Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for a moment of silence and prayer, followed by a prayer of peace, prayer, and applause.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Constitution of our liberty and justice for all.
Public comment, any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The public comment portion of our meeting provides residents and taxpayers of Butler County a reasonable opportunity to comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the board prior to taking official action. Presentations must be limited to three minutes. The chairman has asked me to remind everyone that no personal attacks on the character or reputation of Butler County employees, department heads, or any official will be tolerated. Any speaker doing so may be ruled out of order by the chair. I'll call names in the order they appear on the sign-up sheet, and when you come to the podium, please state your name and municipality of residence. James Eckstein.
James Eckstein of Butler Township. About six months ago, the team I work with on the fifth floor severely limited my public speaking from ten minutes to three minutes, and they're damn proud of it. Since then, they haven't talked about what they are for as county initiatives. They only speak about what they're against. That would be me, Commissioner Jim Eckstein, on any idea I propose. Two weeks ago, I brought forth an initiative to share fifteen percent of the Marcellus Shale money throughout the county. Again, the party of no was on attack. What do you mean by suggesting decentralizing control? We control our kingdom, and we don't want to share. Ladies and gentlemen, this is not what our state legislators envisioned or intended for Act 13 money. Bill McCarry stated at a public meeting he will routinely offset county expenditures with shale money at the county level, AKA it's a car dealer's bait-and-switch plan. This is not what our legislators intended. They are skirting the law in their use of Act 13 money. Each county in Pennsylvania receives shale money, whether or not there is actual drilling. These funds are in the form of bridge money, based on the square footage of a bridge deck, and legacy fund money for parks, bike trails, and farm preservation. For example, Butler County receives approximately $250,000 in bridge money this year and $275,000 in legacy money. This money is appropriated statewide, whether you have drilling or not in your county. Please note, separate impact fees and gas royalty payments from Sunnyview Farm extraction will be approximately $2 million this year alone, $2 million. That's over and above the bridge and legacy money. My proposal was to share part of the county Marcellus Shale revenues throughout the county at fifteen percent of Rose Level, with the exception of Sunnyview Farms. This proposal was immediately shot down by Bill McCarry and Dale Pender and the party of no. They're raying fifteen months and counting down. Using legacy fund money and countywide impact fee money primarily to fund existing expenditures in the county budget was never the intent of the legislature, never. Ask your legislators, Brian Ellis, Darryl Medcalf, Scott Hutchinson, or Randy Valakovich. That's why Marcellus Shale monies were given the name impact fees and legacy funds. How we use these exhaustible gas resources will be our children's legacy. The intent of the legislation was for infrastructure preservation and long-term quality of life in our communities. The state legislators deserve an A for Act 13 initiatives and its obligation at the county to carry out their mandate. I am asking the people of Butler County to consider what's best for our representative democracy the next time. Open this sharing and compromise for the party of no. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner, and once again, you distort the facts, as always. That money was given to the counties, the thirteen different areas where they could spend that money in, strictly for a limited for anything else, and we have always appropriated that money for one of those thirteen, one or more of those thirteen different areas that they could be spending. Next.
Peggy Aresold. Peggy Aresold, Middlesex Township. In January, the Board of Commissioners approved many parks and recreation programs that would be offered to the public along with their fees. One such program offered to the public is the Seventeenth Annual Alameda September Festival to be held this Saturday, September 27th. The festival will include a craft and merchandise vendor show, a car cruise, and the Butler Mines Club Scootin' Toop 5K. The craft show, vendor show, and the Scootin' Toop 5K will start at 9:00 a.m., and the car cruise at 10:00 a.m. There will also be live music, children's activities, face painting, inflatable bounce castle slide, and a lot of other fun activities, and of course, food. September Fest is free and open to the public. The goal is to provide quality recreational opportunities for the families of Butler County. Just remember that there will be no fishing tournament this year for the youth, and the October 4th Family Fishing Day will be canceled due to the pool renovations. The next planned family event will be the haunted bonfire on Saturday, October 25th. Thank you.
Mark Krenski.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Mark.
Couple meetings ago, I was very few asked unanimously to have this act. I didn't know what that was. I had to ask you to comment on it at all. It's supposed to be a material. I'd like to read a little bit of that. "The policy of Butler County, the employees shall not be subject to direct or indirect political influence as a condition of their employment, nor shall employees engage in partisan political activity while at workplace. The requirement includes individual political activities by employees and political activity in county buildings. In order to ensure the integrity of governmental offices, the provision of public services, employees of Butler County are further prohibited from use of official authority or influence for the purpose of interfering with election or nomination for office or affecting the results thereof, except for your own vote. Directly or indirectly coercing or attempting to coerce, demanding or advising any officer or employee to pay, lend, or contribute any part of the place. You can't give money. You can't force them to give money to something." I thought that was a good idea. We don't want our employees, we don't want them to work in government business. We really don't want them to be doing political activities while they're working. Also, I like Mrs. Olman's idea to bring in an independent, to bring in an outside firm to conduct the dependent health insurance eligibility. I think we spend eight million a year roughly on insurance. I think to spend seventy-five, I'm kind of curious to see what it shows up to. About drilling, Commissioner Eckstein, I would like to talk about the impact money. One of the things I kind of feel strongly, I think the impact money is a good idea. Also, I feel any township or borough that does not allow drilling should be able to benefit from the impact money, okay? I think there's only one in Butler County that does that. And I realize you can't diseliminate it entirely. Obviously, if you give it to 911 centers, that benefits everybody. Okay, Commissioner, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We have minutes tomorrow, September 8th.
I'm sorry, sir, there's one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ben.
Good morning, commissioners. There's no doubt we live in a society where our government loves debt. Government seems to gravitate towards debt, finance, and leveraging more than government bodies and agencies, and somehow during this entire process, providing itself in debt, by nothing wrong with kicking the can down the road to the next generation of taxpayers. So it's refreshing this morning to see this board not only earmark but restrict current bond savings towards future debt service payments. Evoked in the affirmative this morning on Resolution 2014 under 20 will place Butler County one step closer towards being debt-free and closer towards a sizable tax reduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. I personally agree with your remarks. I think Butler County is very fortunate debt-wise. Our debt is, debt has been paid off completely, I believe, in 2026. So I think that's very unusual for a county of our size with the activity we have going on. Okay, is that all?
That's all for the morning.
We have minutes tomorrow, September 8th and September 10th meeting. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Old business.
Yes, sir, we do have one item for old business. This was tabled in the September 8th, 2014 Agenda Setting Meeting. Discussion regarding the lease of 93 acres of Sunnyview farmland, with the proposed action today being to amend the contract with Harold Forch to rent and farm the 93 acres at $35 an acre. We ask for your approval.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that. I'd like to say something about that. I'd like to compliment Bill McCarry. I'd just like the people to know, the solicitor did okay this, that farm ground, it's not ours, there's like 170 acres there, he doesn't farm all that. Harold Forch, she's been doing it for a long time. Bill McCarry negotiated an agreement with him, it slipped by us one year. Every so often, we negotiate or go over all the contracts, it slipped by us one year. But him and Harold were able to come up with a really good agreement, I believe, on keeping, being good stories of land, and I think that Harold Forch's family and they're really good farmers, they're local, and he's done it for a long time, and I commend Bill for working that out with Harold and coming up with the resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those in favor, the motion say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
We have no proclamations or certificates today. Our next item is under Election Board. Sherri Hurd.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Sherri.
The first item I have is to approve the appointment of the Election Board for the upcoming November 4th election. Those members would be Dale Poserba as chairperson, Kathy Berganderson, and Karen Borgbady. May I ask for your approval?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And the second item I ask for is the approval to increase the Election Board/Return Board's pay from $8.15 an hour to $11.50 an hour for the chairperson, and from $8 an hour to $11 an hour for the other members. And these people are paid for invoice and all.
How was the business towards an increase? Do you know?
Well, I don't know exactly, but I know since I've been in the office since 2007, that's what they pay.
And they're raising it seven years up. Does there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that. I'd like to say something. I'd like to know the public here. We are giving them considerable rate. It hasn't been addressed, as Sherri said, it hasn't been addressed for a good while. So it should have been addressed incrementally all along in real terms, but these people all have college degrees. Their years used for a very short period of time, it's state law, that they go through this process, and so we're not giving exorbitant raises here, we're just trying to correct an injustice, okay? So I appreciate Sherri bringing this forward for this much needed. Thank you.
Those in favor, the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Sherri.
Under new business, the first item is Court Administration, Tom Holman.
Tom. Good morning, Tom. I'm here today to ask for permission to make application to the General Court Justice Commission for the 2014-15 General Court Grant Aid in the amount of $258,000. I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Aresold.
Under the prison, at the recommendation of prison board, we're asking for your approval of contract with Vocational and Psychological Services of Butler for psychological evaluations at $175 each, persist in the hiring process. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, under Facilities and Operations, John Campbell.
Good morning, John. Good morning, Commissioner. Today I have been asking for ratification approval of a change order for the Gilmore Sand project. This would be change order PC 6 with great environmental systems for install a backwater tower for a sanitary system, a manhole required by credit, and a $4,754 to $36,000.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
John, John, if you have time, can you call my office? I just had a question for you later.
Okay.
At your convenience, okay? Thanks, John.
Next, under Assessment, Chris Savage.
Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, Chris. I'm here today to ask for an approval of a four-year contract with SMS to approve to print our homes that are excluded forms at the cost of $0.35 per form, that also mill the amount of, this contract should not exceed $9,000 per year. You said $0.35 to print them, who also mill the amount of farms, mill it in front of the board.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second. Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, guys. Thanks.
This says .035 on the other side.
Oh, that should be 0.35.
0.25. All right, that's the reason I got the question down.
Next, under Human Services, Anne Brown.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, ma'am.
First item I have is asking for approval of ratification of our previously discussed for clinical support to the community's care planning grant. This is through Pennsylvania Commission on Prime Adrenalinity. This will support the planning efforts for the community's care state in Butler County. It is in the amount of $11,493. There's no county funds to be matched with that.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, after approval of the Emergence and Solution Grant modification with the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development, all we're doing is moving around funding. We're decreasing our homeless preventive rental assistance line and adding it to the homeless preventive financial assistance line, and we're decreasing Rapid Rehousing Rental Assistance Line and adding it to the Rapid Rehousing Financial Assistance Line after approval of that modification.
I'll make the motion. Does there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, ask for approval of two early intervention contracts from fiscal year 2015. They were allocated to the Institute of the Development and the Advanced Wellness and Education Center. They're all state sub-rate. Ask for approval of the two contracts.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second? I'll second it. Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, under Chon Hughes, I'm asking your appointment, your reappointment of Dawn Genareski to the advisory board for a three-year term to expire October 31st of 2017.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
And a motion on this?
I'd like to say something here. I'd like to, we have a lot of good department heads in this county, and I've had the privilege of working with Dawn Genareski on Drug and Alcohol Council. She is the head of Drug and Alcohol in this county. I'm very pleased with her as a county employee. She's caring, deliberate, and well-organized. I've gone to the conference with her. She really cares about people with chemical dependencies and alcohol problems, and I'm very, like other ones that come up, a lot of these names I don't know well, but I know Dawn, and I'm very proud to have her as the county department head, and I'm pleased with her work, okay? Thanks.
Those in favor, the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I ask for approval of contract with the Bank of International, this is for the Children's Web-Based Management Data System, this is effective July 1st, 2014. This contract covers the continued development and implementation of the Child Welfare Information for the Region Phase 1 upgrade in the amount of $18,528.89. Ask for approval of that contract.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Then I have two community operations partner contracts for the fiscal year 2015. They're with the Delphi Education Services and Project Stars Children's Institute. Ask for approval of the two contracts.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Then on behalf of the Area Agency and Aging, I'm requesting approval for the In-Hom Service Contract for Survivors for the Border Dolls through the Health and Community Based Services Program. Bid is received by Friday, September 19th, ready for each attorney presented at the meeting today. The contract will be October 1st of 2014 to June 30th of 2015. There are no county funds involved, same as made to the Aging Block Plan. The contract providers are from Coria Visiting Nurses, Cambridge Home Health, their DNA of Butler County, and there are two sub-rate, one is for number one, and one is for number two and three. Those are state rate, and then there's a contract with Pennsylvania Elder Care Service with them for, ask for approval of those rates.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second. And a question, you said, what did you say about the rates?
Those are, they determined that those were approved by the state, such rates, they receive the bids, and ask for approval upon the state considering rates.
Are these rates up or down, or the same?
I don't know that.
Okay.
On the student, on behalf of Professor Billy Joe, which are both young.
Okay. Those in favor, the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, under Planning Commission, Dave Johnson.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have a request for approval of contract between county and the Southwest Pennsylvania Corporation for work on the Unified Planning Work Program. It's the region's plan, and it's the work that we do. We give reverse for all of our efforts going down the road. Contract is unique this year, and it's a two-year contract, but the work's being done separately in each contract year. The amount that we receive each year is $17,252 for a total of $34,400.
Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead, Dan.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Commissioner. Thanks, David.
Next, under Bridge Program, Kevin Gray.
Good morning, Commissioner. Hi, Kevin. Hi. This morning, I'm asking for your approval of a bid for two vanago steel for $40,000 for the steel beams for the American Bridge and Tillingham.
Kevin, when we opened those bids, we were asking difference, and did you determine why?
Yes, they actually had, they actually had them installed from a misrole from another job that they didn't, they were sitting there, so somebody else paid for most of it.
That's the kind we like.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll second that, and I'd like to say something. I just, well, this came so different, I ask if we use foreign steel or something. Kevin, go ahead.
In the bids, we, and by Pennsylvania state law, you have to ask for domesticated steel, so in the process, it's all has to be domesticated. Should I ask you maybe in the United States?
We're happy to hear.
And it has to be stamped in all steel?
Yes.
Since Navy USA?
Yes.
Those in favor, the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thanks.
For our first item under Commissioners, we've been asked to make a public announcement of a back-on draft job in the Fair Target Groups with employment barriers. It will be held Thursday, October 2nd, 2014, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Tanglewood Center located at 10 Austin Avenue in Aurora.
So you made the announcement. This is a very good program. It's coincidental, but I happen to know a young man who was in a bar fight when he was younger, and he's graduated from college, graduate school, he's applied for a job, and that thing is hanging over him in the background, that he's going to participate in this, I believe, so it's a very worthwhile program. Everybody makes mistakes when they're younger, and working their way out of that mistake and leading a struggle for life is a great thing.
Next item is the adoption of Resolution 2014-20, authorizing the creation of an escrow account for the partial refunding of the county's general obligation bond, Series 2006. We ask for your approval, and Bond Counsel Anthony Ditka is also here to answer any questions.
Is there a motion to approve this? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anthony, would you mind explaining for the public's benefit exactly what we're doing? We appreciate you coming to our meeting today.
My pleasure. Good morning.
Good morning.
A few months ago, the county refinanced its general obligation bond, Series 2004, through the issuance of its general obligation bond, Series 2014, and in doing so, it recognized significant savings. Those savings in the form of debt service savings are $3.1 million this year, this year, and about $811,000 next year. What the county is doing is they're going to take those dollars, and they're going to put them in an escrow fund to pay off a portion of the outstanding 2006 general obligation bonds. Here's the net effect of the county. You have your 2006 bonds outstanding that are carrying an interest rate that is, you know, north of 3%. Now, we're going to take these funds and pay that down. If we took those funds today and invested them, most of you know that the investment rates are awful, so we'd be earning less than one quarter of a percent. So you're using this money in an extremely efficient way, and you're driving down the debt service obligations of the county, and as a result, you'll have dollars that you budgeted or free for other projects, or potentially you can see reductions in taxes. This is an extremely efficient use of the money. It is something I cannot see most counties or any local government doing. It's good, positive.
I'd like to say something about that. I'd like to say this. Look, I agree with what Anthony said, but we're backtracking to cover our rear ends here. You know, it would have been an extremely efficient use by reducing the payment on the prison bond by $300,000 per year for the life of the loan. That would have been an extremely efficient use also. Now, that was my proposal, and it wasn't done. Now, we're doing this to get us out of the problem, but let's, you know, Bill McCarry said earlier that we don't have a debt problem in this county. We had wraparound loans, they pay as minimal as possible. The first 10 years on the prison, they paid $5 million and $17 million in interest. Come on, it's all, it's all smoke and mirrors. You know, we had a problem, we're trying to rectify by this, and I applaud that, but let's just not totally mislead the public. Ben Hall had even agreed, that he can get up, he's on camera, if he agreed, we should have done the $300,000 reduction per year. Now, Ben suggested this after the fiasco happened, but we could have done the other too. So other counties don't do this, they spend willy-nilly and kick the can down the road, don't reduce debt, but I wouldn't be patting us on the back for doing this. I mean, I commend the Commissioners, I'm going to vote yes on this, but it's, you know, Ben also said the alternative was, and we would have saved just as much or more by reducing the debt every year on the payments, and we would have, it would have had less payments on the prison. You know, I'd like to repeat this, we only paid like $5 million, $17 million in interest, and they refinanced the loan, you're only allowed to refinance it once in the first 10 years. That board killed us on that, you know, because the rates did go down, but they did that. But let's not make any mistake about this. You know, the other would have been just as good or better, and if everybody wants to come here and say, we did such a good job, be my guest, go speak on it. Ben agreed with me, it would have been just as good, we could have done it, it would have been done by now, we wouldn't have done any of it. And Bill thinks it's all funny.
I don't think, I don't think it's funny.
It's very true.
I think what you're saying is funny, and first of all, you're talking about past history, what mysteries previous boards and Commissioners did with the jail, and we can't do anything about that. Whether or not doing it this way is better, we don't know that, because we don't know what the interest rates would be in 2016. If those bonds are callable in 2016, and we, whatever board is here at that time would refinance, and they might be paying more than we're paying on our bond now, so this, we think, I think, how about you, Jim? I know you don't, but this is, I think, the best way for the county to save money. It's the most efficient way to spend that saving on the refinancing of the bond.
Uh, look, Bill, I, I, you know, I wanna rebut that. Look, look, I don't, I am gonna vote for this, and I think it's good what we did, okay? But let's just not, it's just, you're just misleading the public.
No.
We could have, well, you know, that's your, that's your opinion. You know, we're not saving anymore. We could have put that right on the loan, and the, and the, and the new Commissioners could have had three hundred thousand less on their payment every year on the prison, on the prison, uh, bond. Okay, now you can't tell me you're saving more. You show me in math how you're saving more, you're doing theoretical stuff, okay? Theoretical. You know, you would have saved the same amount, I don't know, I'm just saying, that's the future, we're not fortune tellers. I'm thankful you're doing this, but just don't, you know, I get sick of government telling us how well they're doing when we're, you know, really deep in debt and have wraparound loans. You know, let's not deceive the public, okay?
Jim, I'm not deceiving the public. As Anthony just told you, on the two thousand six bonds, we are paying north of three percent, somewhere between three and four percent interest. And if we can take this money and pay off a portion of that, then we are saving the difference between the two and a half percent that we're paying on these new bonds plus, or versus what we're paying on the old ones. Is that correct, Anthony? Thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thanks, Anthony. Look, you did a good job.
Commissioner, so on the next item, you'll recall that about two years ago, the board appointed me to represent Butler County in the, on the Dignity and Respect Council of Greater Place Forest. I greatly appreciated that opportunity, and I've been attending quarterly meetings and participating in the initiatives as my time allowed. I would like to now step down from that position and propose a very well-qualified replacement. And the action today would be the approval of the appointment of Charles Hawkins of Cranberry Township to the Dignity and Respect Council of Pittsburgh for an amended term. Ask for your approval.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. The last item is approval of the reappointment of Carolyn Paulson to the Board of Directors of both the Housing Authority and the Redevelopment Authority of the County of Butler for additional five-year terms expiring April two thousand nineteen. Ask for your approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? I will second it.
I'd like to have a discussion on this. Uh, I'm fortunate, we met with this, uh, two weeks ago, we met with this in the office. I am gonna vote no on Carolyn Paulson. Uh, since I always get, get accused of being biased towards women, I'd like to give the press an explanation on this before I do it. Uh, there's three women and two men on that board. I had a fifteen-to-twenty minute conversation after our last meeting, uh, with Carolyn. Very nice, she's my former tax collector from Penn Township, I own property there. Uh, we talked about her values and what she thought about eminent domain and if to use it, and her values are vastly different from mine on eminent domain. Let me make a mistake about this. Eminent domain is the last resort. She says if you make one mistake, they're taking your property, okay? My constituents believe in property owner rights, right to bear arms and freedom of speech. You give them a lot of that, you give them that, and they're happy. You know, these people, what, the people on this board are, uh, Emma Maury, Jerry Andry, Carolyn Paulson, Margaret Clausen, and Larry Dickey, okay? I'm gonna say no to every one of them, 'cause, uh, I'm gonna talk to each one individually before they come back out, okay? I'm gonna talk to each one individually, I'm gonna address their board. Look, I don't like the way the Housing Authority has been running, okay? I don't like this. They control whether Perry O'Malley has his job or not. You know, what's a Penn Theater? Perry O'Malley, they hire and fire him. I think Perry O'Malley should be fired. You know, the Housing Authority, what's a Penn Theater? The stadium, the ball stadium, and the Kaufman House all have in common? Perry O'Malley. He's for big government, you know, the Penn Theater, there's a hole in the roof, it's light to the, the max on Main Street Butler, they ought to be ashamed of it. It's got two hundred and fifty thousand in debt on it, and it's, and you're lucky if anybody give you the money to tear it down, okay? Next on the stadium, he did the stadium, he wanted to use eminent domain and Keystone Electric and, and Dubro. Viable companies, viable companies down there. They bought him in one, now the stadium wants a hundred thousand a year off the county to bail him out. I don't wanna bail him out, okay? Perry O'Malley did it, him and his grandiose ideas. Then he does the Kaufman House on Main Street Zilling. So now he, now he wants, he's got two boondoggles, and I can't even count them, the Penn Theater and the stadium, which is gonna default, which is already defaulting, now he wants